December eighteenth to order. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and may be rebroadcasted on Westford Cat. I'd like to welcome Chief Chambers here this evening and Town Council Attorney Perata. As always, we'll start with open forum. Anybody from the board got anything for open forum?
No.
Staff? Anybody else? Open forum?
Is this one that's on?
Yep.
Diane Wood, 122 Depot. This is probably redundant, but for official recording purposes, want to remind the board that the decision for the firearms, firearms businesses for the town of Acton was approved by the AG's office. So I know you're aware of it, but still, this is more for the community to have a heads up that indeed did go through the AG's office and wasn't approved. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that information.
Jeff or Joe, can we get a copy of that in our next packet?
Sure.
All right. Seeing no more open forum candidates, we'll go to public hearing, and there are none. So we'll move right on to general business. We're in a discussion with Town Council pertaining to the potential firearms bylaw. We have not opened a public hearing on this, so we won't be taking comment from the public. There'll be plenty of time for that when we do open the public hearing. But to begin with that, we'll start with Jeff.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just as a quick reminder, per your direction provided at the November sixth Planning Board meeting, you asked for an updated draft bylaw, which we have in your packet for consideration. And just a quick reminder about some of the changes as compared to the last version that was before town meeting. This version would eliminate all proposed buffers except for a 500-foot separation distance between firearm businesses and a 1,000-foot buffer to schools. There's no limitation proposed on the total number of special permits that could be issued for firearm businesses. Firing ranges are now excluded from the definition of firearm businesses. Therefore, the existing sportsmen's clubs would truly not be affected by this proposal. There are also some minor changes incorporated based on your comments from the November sixth meeting. And as you requested, we did invite both Police Chief Chambers and Town Council here, Justin Perata, to join the discussion tonight. I think you wanted direct confirmation from first, the Police Chief, that this proposal would address the Chief's concerns and that of his department. And secondly, you wanted further clarification from Town Council about the need for a special permit, given the proposed bylaw format. So that's just the high-level review, and I don't know if you want to just jump into it.
Well, first and last, the Chief, satisfied?
Yes, so the two things, I think, and to remain consistent with where we started a year ago. I just, the reason for the special permit for the Police Department is to be able to be part of the process once the firearms business starts to come into town, to play a role in the security requirements that they may have to adhere to and be part of the security plan. It was suggested that we, or there's more teeth if we are able to do that through special permit. I believe there was some question whether or not we would be allowed to have the level of input that I think everybody was a little more comfortable with at the time if we didn't have special permit. And then the other request was the 500-foot buffer between firearms businesses, which we spoke about many times, about the ease of access that when you have multiple firearms businesses in the same, in the same location, it seemed to encourage some of that frame game behavior where, you know, non-approved firearms were being purchased through multiple dealers with the intent of making a firearm that is not currently on the mass-approved firearms list.
Counsel, you have anything you want to start with, or?
So as I understand it, the first question was discretion on a special permit. Is that sort of, you want us to have sort of an overview of that?
Yes.
Would that be a good place to start? Okay, so the board has discretion in how it applies to criteria that are in effect for a special permit, and that applies to any type of special permit. If a special permit is denied, the board needs to make findings as to why one or more of those criteria weren't met. As long as the board does that, a reviewing court is not going to substitute its judgment for that of the board. So it's rare for a denial of a special permit to get overturned. It does happen sometimes. And the reason it happens either is because the board doesn't present enough findings to support its conclusion that one or more of the criteria aren't met. Or in sort of rare instances, no reasonable person could reach the conclusion that the board reached. You know, a judge would have to make that determination. I think it's, you know, sometimes I think traffic is an easy one to sort of understand it, right? So traffic is a, is a, is a part of almost every special permit criteria. It's a part of this one and the general criteria. If the board concludes that, you know, traffic is going to be exacerbated in a certain area, and there's no finding to support that, that could get overturned. If the facts were that there was going to be, let's say, 10 more trips a day in a particular area, and the facts are that there's already 1,000 trips, that might be something that a judge would look sort of ask and say, yes, you've made a factual finding here of 10 additional trips, but, you know, no reasonable person can say that that's going to exacerbate the traffic situation in the special permit area. But if there were 100 trips a day, that's the kind of thing where reasonable minds could differ between 10 and 100. And so as long as any special permit, you know, not just a firearm special permit, any special permit sort of checks those boxes, it is rare for a, for a judge to overturn the denial of a special permit. Can't say it never happens, but it does happen at times. Does that sort of answer that piece of it?
That's a great start.
Yep.
Can you also clarify, is a special permit required in order to impose a 500-foot separation distance between two firearm businesses?
Yes, so the, from a zoning perspective, and, you know, we've talked about this before, there really is no zoning regulation for firearms businesses right now in town. That's different than in for any other business. So, you know, there's no buffer zone for retail businesses, and therefore, there's no buffer zone for a firearms dealer under the bylaw. We could treat it the same way as any other type of retailer. So from a zoning perspective, the answer to that is no. From a licensing perspective, I know there's been some, some comments that, you know, the Chief and his discretion of granting a permit could deny one. The licensing standard is what's reasonable and what isn't. So anytime you see reasonable, that's the definition of a case-by-case basis. In a particular case, a denial of a license might be reasonable if there was, if it was within 500 feet. It might not be. It would have to get resolved by a court every time. Doing it this way ensures that from a zoning perspective, that buffer will be incorporated into every firearms business that gets a special permit. Is there overlap? Sure, there's an overlap at times between licensing and zoning. But pretty much every use of a piece of land in the Commonwealth, other than residences, has a licensing component and a zoning component. Here, because there is no specific zoning component for firearms businesses in town, incorporating that buffer into the special permit, permit criteria ensures that it will be in place each time.
Can you also speak to whether or not a special permit is required to involve the Police Department in the Security and Operations Plan as part of the planned board public hearing process?
Yeah, I mean, I defer a little bit. I, you know, I, I think, I assume in the initial licensing process, there is some sort of investigation. But the sort of, the sort of comprehensive security and operational plan that would be incorporated into this version of special permit criteria is much more robust than would be available under just licensing. And, you know, I think the operational plan is, is, is a factor there, too. When is it going to be open? Who's going to be working there? How many employees will be there at a certain time? That definitely goes beyond what would be even in a security plan for a firearms business. So those two things would be imposed under the special permit criteria that wouldn't exist now, either under zoning or licensing. Again, in a clear way. In a given case, sure, maybe a buffer would be reasonable for licensing, but maybe it wouldn't be, and it would have to get litigated every time.
All right, great. Thank you. So I think I'll go to the board, and we can, you know, we've all had the benefit of looking at their draft bylaw. Any comments or questions? Bob?
I just wanted to follow up on what the Chief and, and what our council said, and I appreciate council's opinion about the 500-foot being much stronger by being in the bylaw. We do have a letter in the packet today from somebody who's pro-Second Amendment talking about how they were willing to allow the Chief to have this normal review. And I think we have Section 122 of the current laws in our packet. But it's my understanding there is a firearm bill before the state. We don't know when, when or if it will ever pass. But I think the current version would remove many of the powers of the local police chiefs in that review. So in addition to what you said about the 500 feet, I think by us following through with a bylaw, we would retain our ability to ensure that that 500 foot is, is enacted upon and not have to rely upon the Chief to have that power, because that power could be removed from the Chief here in the near future. So I just want, I want to make sure that that's on record.
Sure. Yeah, there are many bills. I think there's probably 20 firearms bills up. They all say different things. But my understanding is that that's in one of them as well. And again, even with the power, there's the ambiguity in the reasonableness standard, right? So it's sort of double-layer, I think. There's the concern that even that might go away, depending on how that gets shaken out.
So I just want to put on the record, I did try to address, you know, what we received as a very visible comment on this.
All right, anything else, Bob?
No, that's the, the most important.
All right, and you're good with the language as the draft is written at this point?
Yes, I am going to ask at some point to get a copy of it so I can turn on and off the edits, because it's a little confusing. But yes, when I scanned that, it looks like it captures the intent of what we want it to retain. Again, it's the 500 and 1,000-foot buffers, which is
Yep.
a most important. Chief?
Yes, I just wanted to comment. I am aware of the email that Bob had referenced. I did send a request to Mass Chief's legal counsel, as well as Ron Lyden, who's a very well-respected firearms expert in Massachusetts. I've not heard back at this, at this time about the application of the Chapter 140, Section 122 to in the manner that Mr. Prescott referenced in his email. I have never heard of it being applied that way, nor have I seen any case law indicating that it can be. So I would absolutely agree with Town Council that, in order for consistency, I do believe that the special permit is still the best option.
Okay, great. Thank you. Joni?
I just have one issue in, in looking through the amendment, the way, the new bylaw. And I agree with everybody else that absolutely we need to have this and to give the Chief what he needs. My one question is on 665, and where we're talking about the setbacks, and we say 1,000 feet of a school, including public or private elementary, vocational, or secondary school, or public or private college, junior college, or university. Considering that we're talking about colleges and universities, why don't we include preschool? To me, preschool is probably more important than a college or university.
All right, so we'll go to the board on that. I think...
So, so we see preschool, but then is, do we define that as a daycare center? You know what I mean? That's where I think we start going down that road is, is...
Not just as, but in addition to. There's preschool and there's daycare centers, and they can be slightly different. But yes, Mike, we'd have to address both.
So a lot of times preschool is part of a daycare center. I guess my question is if we put in preschool, would it be, or can it be part of the definition? Or what, what do you think? If it were to be within 1,000 feet of a, I mean, now that we have several, you know, daycare centers along the area where we're talking about allowing firearms businesses and are going to have another one at the, you know, what used to be Matrix One site.
Yeah, I mean, the definition really can be anything. I mean, I do, I'm not an expert on this, but I knew though there's a different licensing sort of regime between preschools and daycare centers. I know under what's called the Dover Amendment, it's easier to open a daycare center. But certainly, you know, there's no reason that that couldn't be in the definition from my perspective. I can't see any reason why that wouldn't be able to be in that definition. Whether or not it should be, you know, is a question I really can't answer.
So I go to the board.
We, board, want to include daycare? I mean, preschools? You have a thought, Bob?
No, my only comment would be, I think we did have in the previous version childcare center as defined by law. And I think that's probably what we would reference again.
So that, that was, that is a different licensing
Right.
standard.
So I think childcare center is synonymous with daycare center. Am I not mistaken, or are they different?
I believe they are the same. There's different kinds, but I think they are the same. So I guess my question would be, you know, it's one thing to be licensed as a school. I wonder how many of those overlap with the existing childcare centers? Because you may want to have benefit of that, you know, at least by the public hearing process.
Yep.
Could we have that research, Jeff? Just the ones that we have, what their licensing is?
So I think we need to do that for the public hearing.
Yeah.
Dylan?
I actually, I thought we were, we had a brief conversation about the junior colleges and colleges. I don't know what's required to actually become a licensed junior college. I actually have an issue with the junior college, college addition to the list of schools. I would prefer that that gets removed and we keep preschools out. I think the area that we're talking about having, that we're allowing these businesses to operate is an area where, preschools and junior colleges could easily be stood up, you know what I mean, to, to service that part of the community. And I'm not sure that that's the intent we're trying to get at with this, which it would be the public schools of Westford, I think, which is where, and, and when you show the tech, which would be the, the schools that, when you think of schools in Westford, those are the, the schools that at least come to my mind. I think if we start to broaden this definition a lot, we start to really narrow down the areas where any business could potentially operate. A little bit, we're down the rabbit hole we were in before with all of these different places where children congregate and blah, blah, blah. And we're starting to interpret a lot, but that's my, that's my opinion.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would agree. I think if we, it'd be nice to find the, the stats that, you know, Jeff and Joe are talking about. But I think if you open it up, it's going to worry about the creep that happened last time, and we ended up having a really massive proposed bylaw that didn't pass.
And, and I guess what I'm getting at is, I mean, if you look at daycare centers, those children can't protect themselves. Somebody in a public, private college, junior college, or university have enough common sense to protect themselves. So I guess it, it kind of doesn't make sense that we're putting in colleges but taking out preschools and daycares. In my mind.
I hear you.
So might I suggest that we...
And I feel like the colleges is a future need. We don't, do we have a junior college or a college in town? So I mean, it's, it feels like language is not even necessary based upon the scope of schools that we have in town at this point.
I would say I'm happy taking those out.
I'd be happy taking that out as well.
So just to be clear, public or private college, junior college, or university?
At this point, yeah, I would take those out. I would suggest that we direct staff to work with this without the preschool information, and we can start talking about that during the public hearing so they can get some information about licenses.
Sure.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, if there was a clear definition of a preschool versus a daycare versus a childcare facility, I'm happy to rethink that. But at this point, I'm not sure I understand the licensing differences between them and, and whether this board would would hear of the difference when we're citing these locations.
And I'd like to understand which, which of our facilities in town already have those respective licenses.
Exactly, yeah.
There is, I think, a statute that defines most of those things, if I remember correctly, pretty lengthy definitions. What is a preschool? What is a daycare center? That kind of stuff.
Yeah.
So, you know, that sometimes is easier to go with the definition already exists in the statute.
Yeah, perfect.
So we can certainly pull together that research, but for the start of the public hearing process, knowing that there could be amendments, what do you want in for language for the start? Do you want what was in here minus what you just crossed out and then wait to have benefit of the additional information?
I think that, that'd be my suggestion. Okay with that, Joni?
Yes, I'm fine. Yeah.
Well?
That would be good.
I'm fine.
All right.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have any, on the board have any comments about?
Daycare specifically? No.
No. What about this, about the draft?
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, good, Dylan.
Well, I just have a question. So I want to make sure that I understand this very clearly with regard to this permit granting authority, granting or denying a special permit. And I think I understood this from the public hearing on the last bylaw amendment. So if this board was to hear, say, a third or fourth firearm business, and the scope of services, the services offered to the town was basically the same as we'd heard in the previous two, let's say that were, that got approval, and the board chose to deny a special permit request because we felt that the services, the needs of the town were already being served, would that be deemed a sufficient reason to deny a, a special permit?
So not on its face, right? Because that's sort of why we, there was the, there was the possibility of capping it before. Again, would have to be linked specifically to one of the specific criteria that exist. And because number is now not a criteria, the board wouldn't be able to just say, there's already five. We don't think there should be a sixth. It would have to be linked to, more closer to what you're referring to, which is one of the general special permit criteria is, you know, how it will benefit the town and/or how it won't. And that could be a viable criteria to deny another one if there were enough factual findings that supported that. A lot of times what happens is you have to sort of think of it like a mirror. The, the, the level of sort of findings that need to exist to support it depend in some ways on what the applicant says. So if the applicant comes in and says, yes, there's already three, but we're going to be different because we're going to provide these types of guns, and we're going to sell them cheaper, or we're going to, you know, do, we're different, and we are providing a service. Because that's, that's probably, well, there will be, there, there's other criteria that would come into play, right? There might be traffic. There might be
Sure.
multiple special permit criteria that would, because you only need one, right? If it's denied, that would give rise to a reasonable denial. So I can't tell you, I, I can say that just saying we don't need another one probably wouldn't fly, wouldn't, wouldn't stick. But enough of a robust factual finding as to why another one isn't, doesn't service the town, given the ones that are already there, is the kind of thing that would fall under that general benefit for the town criteria. Again, with the caveat that, and, you know, it's diff, real difficult to say without having the facts in front of you, you know? What is this applicant saying in, in support, and what is the board finding to support its denial?
Right.
And, and, and the more, the more sort of differences in what's being proposed from what's already exists, the, the more likely that they would have to be for, for a judge to uphold it, going back to the traffic, traffic example I gave, for a judge to be able to say, yeah, that's, that's reasonable. I can see where a reasonable person would say that we don't need another one because of X, Y, and Z.
Right, great.
Does that answer it?
It does. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Good.
I'm all set. All right, you're all set. So I just want to say I'm in favor of having the bylaw because, you know, right now we have a chief that's concerned about public safety. What happens if a chief down the road doesn't have that same concern? And there's no special permit that's required to have that whole secure process, so. And then I have a question, Jeff, on 6654. It references firing range, which I thought we took out of here. The applicant demonstrates that one or more of the firearm business types, parentheses firearm dealer, firing range gunsmith.
Yes, that should be stricken.
Thank you.
Thank you. We got them all.
Do you have anything else, Joni?
No, I don't have anything. Thank you.
All right. Unless anybody else has any other comments? You get a motion?
Sure. I will move that we authorize staff to work with Town Council to publish a public hearing notice relative to the draft zoning bylaw amendment for the creation of a firearms bylaw as amended this evening.
Second? Motion of second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? All right.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
We'll be in touch.
You too. Thank you.
No, it's like somebody read my name. I guess it's great.
Let's give everybody a minute to clear.
Thanks, Chief.
All right, so our second general business item is PB 1832, 19 Littleton Road. Request for extension of time to complete construction of sidewalk on Littleton Road and the extension of the bond. Pending final Mass DOT inspection. Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just, if you may recall, I believe this bond was previously extended at least once. The sidewalk has been constructed. It's been constructed for a while. The applicant is simply looking for something in writing from MassDOT, from the state, to make sure that everything is in fact up to their standards before, before we release the bond. We don't want to lose any leverage we have. We don't think there are any issues, but we want something in writing from MassDOT. So we're simply asking for this extension, and we fully support this request.
Great. I'll go to the board. Any discussion, Bob?
No.
Joni?
No.
Dylan?
No.
Darren?
No.
I don't have any.
I will move to approve the requested extension for the time of construction and the bond for PB 1832, 19 Littleton Road to January 7th of 2025.
Second? Motion of second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Great.
Thank you.
Moving right along, PB 1707, Spalding Hill Estates. We have one, two, three, four, five parts to this, this item. Jeff, Joe?
Jeff.
Joe?
And so you saw in your packet, engineering has reviewed these materials as the project continues to move along. They are satisfied with what they're seeing from all the interimas built thus far. So the applicant is requesting some bond reductions in some of the work that has been completed as they kind of move on to developing a little bit more of St. Paul Lane, establish a bond for that section, and release the lots associated with it. So that's where the series of requests come from. But engineering is satisfied with the work that's been done.
Great. All right, I'll go to the board. Bob, anything?
No.
Joni?
No.
Dylan?
No.
Darren?
No.
I have nothing.
All right. I will forward a motion to reduce the bond for St. Augustine Drive from Station 0+00 to 8+00 to the amount of $54,919.37.
Yes.
Yes.
These are general business items on a reduction of a bond. Do you have a question? I guess we certainly entertain a question.
Well, the engineer may not know, but the drainage, you know, I've held many meetings on this topic.
Can you come up to the microphone?
Name and address.
Name and address for the record, please.
Ray Vino, 256 Groton Road. Today, I spent five hours in my backyard with my other neighbors trying to mitigate water flow that in the 36 years I've been at my location, I have not seen. So the drainage behind Oakmont Drive, which we all noted as an issue, far exceeded the level of the culvert could handle, to the point of where the water was running up my neighbor's driveway and out onto Groton Road. So the reason I came to the meeting this evening was the reduction of bond, I believe, is, satisfies the engineering plan. So the hydrology report, whatever hydrology results in the mitigation that was supposed to take place, clearly has not. Because in 36 years, we've had hurricanes, and we've had greater storm levels than I saw today. But I've never seen anything like it. It was a raging river through my yard, out and onto Groton Road today. So I'd urge some... So, I'd urge some aspect of bond being withheld to investigate this and find out what went on. Thank you.
Great. So, you know, this is a reduction, this isn't the release of the bond, there's still money being held. I'm sure Mr. Starrett will be involved with this. And he said it was coming from Oakmont, though.
Well, Oakmont Drive is the kind of the dead end road.
Yeah, I know where it is.
The drainage that comes down, there's a brook that doesn't run all the time, it runs under a driveway that connects to Oakmont Drive, and then goes between two, five, six, and two, five, four Groton Road and under Groton Road. And it far, the pipe could not handle the water today, and I've never seen that in thirty-six years.
Okay.
And plus, the water was also quite white, so the spurious sand and so forth from holding ponds or whatever was amazing.
Yeah, it was quite a storm.
I'll send some things to Paul.
Perfect.
Photos and video.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so I think we had a motion of second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? All right.
Okay. Motion to reduce the bond for St. Augustine from Station eight plus zero zero to thirteen plus fifty to the amount of twenty-nine thousand, thirty, three hundred and forty-four dollars and twenty-five cents.
Second. Motion of second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
All right, then I'll put forward a motion to reduce the bond for St. Paul Lane from Station zero plus twenty-five to ten plus fifty to the amount of two-hundred and three thousand, two-hundred and ninety-four dollars and eighty-nine cents.
Second. Motion of second, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed?
Okay. And then a motion to establish the bond for St. Paul Lane from Station ten plus fifty to fifteen plus zero zero for the, for the amount of three-hundred and thirteen thousand, eight hundred and seventy-nine dollars and eighteen cents.
Second. Motion of second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And lastly, a motion to authorize the release of lots eight through ten and lots twenty-two through twenty-four from the covenant.
Second. Motion of second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Great, thank you, Dylan.
Great.
Okay, next we have PB two, three, one, one, eighty-one Nutting Road, Ollie Way, request for endorsement of plans and execution of covenant.
Sure. If you remember, Ollie Way, it's really, it's the two lot subdivision really to create just one additional lot. Throughout the planning board public hearing process, before the board closed, there was actually a change in the ownership. It really is for family purposes. I think you folks were made aware of that arrangement during the public hearing process. However, it does create a minor legal issue. We did reach out with town council, they approved of the approach, they thought it was sound, and what this really does is it just gets on the record that even though there was a change of ownership, that they had the authority to act on behalf of the new part owner, and that we have the revised plans that actually show the current property owners. And so, by having the plans adjusted to show all the current owners and getting the after-the-fact authorization, town council feels quite comfortable. This is above board and sound and consistent. It's really to prevent down the road someone from saying, oh, we didn't agree to all these things, and now we just have a paper trail to that effect, and we only ask that it be subject to satisfactory review by town council for just, they're good with the approach, just as with any covenant or any document like this, we just want a sanity check from town council. And it is based on prior such documents, so we have no expectation of anything amiss.
Great. All right, Bob, any questions, concerns?
No.
Joni?
I had one question on Form L, paragraph A, one. It's discussing sanitary sewer, or sewer with manholes, pipes, conduits, and other appearances, but the storm drainage is discussed in item three. These are septic, so I just didn't know why that paragraph was there, or why that item was there.
I can't speak to that at this moment. It could be, I don't know if it's unfortunately standard language.
That, well, I assumed it was boilerplate, but.
Is.
We can always highlight it and just ask.
Okay.
We can try to scrub that with council review.
Okay, good. And then the other question I had was, who actually tracks this drainage report, the inspection of the drainage system every Janu, or it's supposed to be, it's due every January? Does engineering?
Yeah.
Does they have a, like a, okay, reminder, that's all I just wanted to know.
They love us.
My bad, my bad. Okay, thank you, that's it.
All right. Dylan?
Okay, I will put forward a motion to authorize the.
Do, have the.
Oh, no, I don't, sorry.
No, I'm just, I, you know, the language is pretty standard in these things anyway that says this will be conveyed with the land and the property, and is this just sort of like safety, I guess?
Yeah, it really is, because at the end of the day, I mean, you do have standard language that says, you know, heirs and assigns are still, however, the fact is there was a change of ownership before the decision was issued. So, if there were a new owner after the decision was clocked in, we wouldn't be having this conversation, it's just because it came in during that bit of window before you closed the hearing.
Technically, they may not add notice.
Right, it's to cure the procedural deficiency.
Okay, that makes sense.
Which they've already.
Yeah. Provided that, so.
All right, ready now?
Yeah, sorry for jumping the gun. Move that we authorize the establishment of the covenant, subject to town council review, and endorse the plans as presented for eighty-one Nutting Road, Ollie Way, as amended with Joni's comments this evening.
Second. Motion of second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None.
Okay.
Thank you.
PB one, nine, two, three, seventy-three Nutting Road, Wendell Place, request for extension of time for the previously approved stormwater management permit for an additional three years.
This is fairly straightforward, Mr. Chair. So, as you recall, Wendell Place, many of the decisions, they cross-referenced each other, however, the stormwater management permit is actually up for expiration, and so they have been making a lot of recent progress, and they've been preparing, as you may recall from another recent agenda item, they've been preparing for a sale of the project. And so, this is just to bridge that gap and to maintain that stormwater management approval so they can go forward with that transaction. And we do support this, otherwise they would have to come back for another stormwater management permit.
It could be fun.
We have different definitions.
All right, Bob, any questions, comments?
No.
Joni?
No.
Dylan?
Only did town engineering review this and say that they're fine with the plan as it was put together, it had been three years. I don't know if standards change or.
We did not get that, but we're willing to say, if you want to make it subject to satisfactory.
I just don't keep up on the latest breaking news.
Well, we haven't changed our stormwater management standards.
Right.
So, I don't know what they would catch now versus then, but.
Or if they became aware of a different condition on that, you know, in that area that could have somehow affected, you know? Okay.
No, if you, if you folks feel strongly, we can, you know.
No, I think that's a great idea, it's conditioned upon saying that they're, yeah, they're good, okay with it.
Lack of objection by the engineer.
And if they don't want to look at it, they don't have to look at it. Great, yeah.
Okay, thanks. That's it.
Darren?
Nope, I'm good.
Okay. I will move that we approve the requested extension of time to the previously approved stormwater management permit for an additional three years for PB nineteen, twenty-three, seventy-three Nutting Road, Wendell Place, subject to, I guess, non-desent.
Lack of objection.
Or lack of objection by town engineering, for an additional three years, that taking that out to December thirty-first of twenty twenty-six.
Second. Motion of second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, great.
Thank you.
Next, we have a discussion of the EV working group status. Jeff, Joe?
Sure, I can certainly go ahead. So, it was about this time, almost a year ago, that we had the group put on hiatus for now as the new codes were getting developed, and now seeing what's made its way in, the group is largely satisfied with seeing what's in there, and that would satisfy a lot of their goals that they were having as they were going through their process. The question that's kind of out there now is, you know, whether or not we still want them to keep proceeding with any kind of work. One of the things that could, they could provide some input on is whether or not to adopt the opt-in code, which has been talked about for a potential warrant article at annual town meeting. So, that would be, you know, I guess, kind of extending their lifespan, if you will, about three months, just to see if they would have any kind of recommendation. So, that would be the request, if you want us to ask the other group if they would be willing to weigh in on the opt-in code and provide a recommendation.
Yeah, I'd be in favor of that.
Yeah?
Bob, thoughts?
Not much.
Yeah.
Have we spoken to them, are they in favor of?
So, I spoke with one member, it was that person's position that there were multiple members that would have interest, but obviously, if they don't have interest, they don't have to do the work.
Yeah.
But we suspect, you know, they put a lot of time and research in, and they're very much, I think, up to speed on this, so I think they're the ones in the best position to give you folks an opinion. So, if they're willing to do it, we can have that conversation.
I can speak for myself, so I can step up to that again.
Okay.
All right, so.
Great, so I'll move that we request of the EV working group to provide input regarding the opt-in specialized energy code for a potential warrant article at annual town meeting.
Second. The motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I just, Dylan's language there was just for a town meeting, not the next town meeting, correct?
It just says at annual town meeting.
Yeah.
All right.
We're going to have time before spring, we don't want to try that.
Great, so our next item is discussion and consider sponsorship of the potential zoning amendments related to the MBTA Communities Multi-Family Overlay District.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I'll try to be brief, and we do have a couple members besides two planning board members from the MICMAC committee here in the audience, and they will certainly correct me if I don't accurately provide a summary here. So, just a quick reminder how we got this far. We provided information at the twenty-twenty-two strategic planning retreat, we submitted an action plan in December of twenty-twenty-two, which was approved, beginning in July of twenty-twenty-three, the MICMAC committee, they met approximately nine times, and I will say they've done a lot of high-quality work. It was very challenging, but I think we're getting a much better outcome for it. It was a major topic, as you recall, at the twenty-twenty-three strategic planning retreat. We've had at least two online surveys, we had a focus group for persons age fifty-five plus, we secured the services of a qualified planning consultant, Dodson and Flinker, to assist with this process, and we also secured some DLTA, District Local Technical Assistance, from NIMCOG, a regional planning agency, to help with this. So, some of the highlights of the where, Joe, if you would be kind enough to try to put that up, thank you. The blue areas, in prior versions, you saw like a bunch of different areas labeled A through G. The MICMAC committee, and partly with the planning board, you've gone through this iteration a number of times, I'd say properties have been either removed about four different times since they began this process. And so, what you have left here, highlighted in blue, is a majority of Tech Park West, but it excludes the Bell Apartments. We have a portion of Neshoba Valley ski area, and the reason for a portion instead of the entirety is because they are contemplating a development agreement that would limit the total number of units. Unfortunately, that type of agreement that artificially lowers the density is inconsistent, it would throw us out of compliance, so they put together a revised outline that they believe they can fit those units within, and would still be in compliant with the requirements. There's still the northwesterly intersection of Littleton and Concord Roads near Orchard Square, we still have two fifty Littleton Road, the Swim and Tennis Club, we have the Westford Regency, and we have a small portion of Tech Park East. So, some of the other highlights is this bylaw would require ten percent affordability requirement, it allows mixed uses in the overlay, some of the uses would be as-of-right, others would require a special permit, and we'll say a little bit more about that later. It maintains the existing front yard setback requirements in the underlying zoning districts if it is along Powers Road, Littleton Road, or Concord Road. It, and it also provides an additional buffer of fifty feet if the property would abut a residentially zoned area. It's called a fifty-foot transitional buffer. It would require approval of an access plan by the fire department that we talked about early on in the process. There are architectural, lighting, and landscaping standards, there's requirements for the provision of recycling, there are incentives for sustainability measures, there's provisions for a limited number of waivers or bonuses to incentivize some of the project elements that we can't require under the bylaw. And then it also allows for a conceptual submission process where folks could come to the planning board before public hearing process and get your thoughts and opinions on a proposal, even perhaps some of the waivers or types of projects that they'd be looking for before they go through the detailed engineering process. So, that's the high, high overview, there's a couple of caveats I want to mention. First, we are working through a couple of minor issues with our consultant in NIMCOG. We have a couple of locations that are single lot locations, specifically Westward Swim and Tennis and Westward Regency, that can create a potential issue for compliance, there are a number of workarounds, we only found out about some of this this afternoon, so we don't have options, we want to give you the range of options. And then, the Neshoba Valley ski area, they also don't necessarily like if you don't include the full lot and you only take a portion of a lot, but there's ways to justify that, and we believe this case, it meets those standards, but we just have to go through that exercise. MICMAC also would like town council to review the draft bylaw to make sure for mixed use opportunities that it isn't easy for someone to try to circumvent the intent and purpose of the existing zoning bylaw for the non-residential uses. So, in other words, it's fine to allow mixed use, but they want to make sure that they're not avoiding some process that they might have to go through now. We're not talking about the multifamily, we're just talking about, you know, if they want to do a mixture of uses, and that means residential and non-residential. And MICMAC would also like the planning board to weigh in on some of the requirements for the non-residential uses in a mixed use development, so it could range from, some things could be as-of-right, and that's what is in the current version, there's a limited number of uses that they thought, or some thought, might make sense, and others, anything else would need a special permit. They've also suggested that any kind of use other than the multifamily might need a special permit, so they just want to bring that to your attention. I think that's it on the high level, we welcome your comments, your suggestions, and we have other folks here who can speak to this, if I.
Including one of the management groups, Gutierrez Company in the back.
Oh, yes, we do have, yep, Mr. Israel Lopez from the Gutierrez Company.
All right, great, so, I guess I'll start with the board. Bob, comments, thoughts?
The one area I struggled with was the phraseology, certain commercial uses, I thought it kind of vague, and I did look through the bylaw to see if there was any more clarification, and there's not a lot. I think we need to strengthen the language in here that, what is meant by certain commercial uses that encourages the purposes and objectives of the MCMOD. I'm a little fuzzy on that, especially going to a special permit, you know, what is it we're reviewing, what's, what would be preferential, what would be non-preferential for certain commercial uses? Another area of concern I have, we can probably do some research on our larger housing developments already in town, but the number of parking spaces is set at one, recommended one and a half, and I sit here and I wonder if that's just enough. a half. And I, I sit here and I, I wonder if that's just enough. Um, most households tend to have two cars. So now if you've got an obvious unit that's a, a, a single-person unit, yes, but how many of those would we have? And then when you have guests, what do we do? So. I'd be looking at like maybe some statistics from Bell or, or Princeton to help understand if that's a reasonable ratio of parking spaces per number of units.
Yes. So looking at the Bell Apartments, um, it is. Uh, we specifically looked at that because I knew that question would come up. And so the 1.5, we, we also reached out to a number of developers who do this sort of thing. We had some concerns because, you know, some of the other areas were a little more urban and, you know, Westward is not quite so urban. But looking at aerial imagery, uh, it's consistently been utilized at or below the 1.5. So there's been, um, consistent vacant spaces, uh, since it's existed.
Okay.
So we, we think this number also includes a little safety factor as well. And of course, we're trying to strike the balance between, you know, you want to have adequate parking, but we also don't want to have more impervious area than we need. It's stormwater, it's all kinds of other things.
Yep.
So, um, so we did look at that.
And so then there's just now the question of, of where's the cutoffs, you know? Obviously for large developments, yeah, one and a half should work based upon the Bell model.
Yep.
But then what, what is the, the sweet spot in terms of, okay, if it's four units, do we need two per unit, or do we need 10 of them for those eight units? I don't know.
I think that's reasonable. Smaller, you have more concern, especially.
Yeah.
Guest parking and, uh, so we're happy to look at that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm worried about, you know, what's the, the number for the residents and then some certain guests. Um, there'd obviously be, um, mitigating circumstances based upon what the street design was, where, where there were budding areas for there to be overflow. But I don't want to be creating a, a traffic situation because we have insufficient capacity.
Good point, Bob.
As I said, um, I did note in here and I was, had was not that familiar until today with the concept of complete streets. And it, um, it does reference that in here. And I know we kind of chatted before, Jeff, but, um, if we're gonna keep this in here, I do think we need to have a reference to the, uh, Westward's complete streets policy. That was not included. It was just a reference to complete streets as a concept.
Okay, we'll look at that.
There's minor changes. I mean, there's missing sections throughout. I noticed, um, 8 dot 10 started with 8 dot 10 dot 2, 8 dot 10 dot 1.
Yeah, there's a number of those.
Number of those are, I can find that throughout here. Um. Last thing I had was, um, and well, 8 dot 10, I think it was 85B. The concept of whether an open space is public or private shall be easily discernible. I was a little confused by that because I'm not sure that elsewhere in town today, we have open spaces that are easily discernible to be, um, public or private necessarily.
So a lot of them are private. I think there are some where there are public trails.
Yes.
And so that is one of the things, though, that you could try to incentivize, um, if you have amenities that are available to the public instead of merely the residents there.
Well, that I agree with. Um, I'm not sure that's what was put in the wording.
Okay.
And so they were trying to talk about using low walls, fences, landscaping to kind of act as physical barriers for.
Oh, maybe they're trying to define the public portion.
Or, versus the private portion.
Yep.
And, um, I think elsewhere in town, we've tended to use signage. So I'm just, want to make sure we're consistent. Um, I appreciate the concept. I appreciate what you said, Jeff, where yes, we would like to encourage whenever possible that it all be open. We've done that with many of our developments to enhance the trail connections. But, um, I'm just not sure we need to be putting in here to use attractive fences to make private areas private.
Okay.
As I say, the big thing I've looked at in my review is just being consistent through, with all of our other zoning and policies. And this is just, there's a lot to this. I mean, it, it takes a lot to read this. There's a lot of good work here. And obviously, some of the comments last time still need to be addressed. Some of the figures and diagrams have inconsistencies. I know I talked to, to Joni about that. Um, just the color coding of one versus two stories seems to be a little suspect on some of the, the housing types.
All right.
Yeah.
Thanks, Bob.
Yep.
Joni?
No, I have nothing else.
You have nothing else? Great. Dylan?
On the subject of open space, I guess I have a question. The district transitional buffer, is the intention that that space should not be used as, to count as open space, might be able to be used for open space, or definitely should be considered open space?
I don't have an obvious answer to that question. I think the intent was merely to what currently remains for good buffer should remain in place.
Yep.
I don't know that, um, it was intended that it could be used to count towards the open space.
Yeah.
I think it was in, in addition to, but we'll check and, uh, check the wording on that if, if that's how you folks feel.
Well, I don't know how I feel. I, it's, it's just that I was trying to interpret that in the open space section, and then I was thinking about, because in some of these developments, it says that they can have an outdoor amenity area if there's not sufficient open space. So I could see a situation where in a large development where the residents only have an outdoor amenity space. They have decks and things like that, but they don't really have open space. Uh, you know, a developer not making the claim that the transitional area serves as the open space, but if it doesn't have like walking trails and things like that in it, it's really more of a screening of the district from like.
That was the purpose.
Right, right. So I just, you know, I'm always just looking for things that could become before us and be like, okay, how are we gonna solve that riddle if and when it comes? So I didn't know if the board had an opinion on whether we should think about the, the transitional buffer in, out, or leave it ambiguous. But right now, I think it's just a little bit ambiguous, and it could be subject to interpretation based on the application before us. Maybe that's what we want. I.
I think we should at least nip it in the bud and at least think about it and address it now. I think there's different kinds of open space. I think there's some that are supposed to be amenities, and you obviously may want that close to where the buildings are that people are residing.
Yeah.
But then there's other open space that maybe, I don't know, I think we should just, uh.
I think the buffer should be the buffer.
Yeah. Uh, that was the intent?
Yeah. I mean, unless it had like, if it had a nice series of walking trails and it was long, I think you could maybe make a case that that serves as a part of the open space, especially if it like links the development to the open space or something.
Yep.
But again, it's.
I think we have a provision that allows for, um, pedestrian features, trails and such.
Yep.
In, in that, um, so because obviously, like you just said, you might be preventing, um, connectivity, and that's not the.
Right.
The intent.
Right. That was, that was it. I, that was just one that I was kind of scratching my head, like with, how do we want, I don't know that we want to prohibit it from being used, but I also didn't know if we wanted to consider maybe putting some more context in that buffer area for maybe a small paragraph that says in order for the district transitional area to serve as open space, it needs to have connectivity to an area that's defined as open space or have it walking trails or something that serves the residents of the, of that community more than just be a, a screening of the space. You know what I mean?
No, that's a good point.
I think that makes total sense.
Great.
That's it.
That's it. Darren?
Joe, if you go to page 18 of the draft, it's basically talks about parking spaces. So on 6A1, it says a minimum of 1.5 per residential unit shall be required. Then it says on II, no more than three parking spaces per residential unit shall be allowed, and then, you know, MICMOD, except by waiver. So I don't know if we want to encourage three per unit.
That's why I think it's intending to set it up as a maximum. So one and a half is a minimum, but three is a maximum per unit.
Right. So in other words, if someone, say, under the lower end of a development, say there was only 10 units, right? And say they have one bedroom, two bedroom, and three bedrooms, they may want more than one and a half. So the thought was, uh, you can't have more than three per, um, unless you get a waiver. So you would have to say that's reasonable in that case and allow it.
Sure.
I would do the same thing, Darren. I was thinking about that, you know, unless they're building these monster five-bedroom units, you know, that, you're, no more than three spaces per unit.
Well, then we, you know, someone goes, yeah, great, I'm gonna do three per unit. And then they, you know, they put in 300 units.
Right.
Now you've got now this 17 acres of pavement sitting there, the same thing we're trying to get away from right now. If I've got a four-bedroom unit and it's been geared towards workforce, I would want four parking spaces, I would think.
Yeah.
So, um.
There are other approaches about looking at the number of bedrooms, but, uh, we were, you know, going for simplicity and, you know, on average, especially for larger developments, one and a half should work. But we're, we can take a look at that with our.
Well, and pavement's expensive. I mean, builders are gonna put pavement in if they don't have to.
Right.
And stormwater.
Stormwater, right.
Yeah, I mean, if it's gonna be, to your example, 10 units, two bedrooms, three and four bedrooms, maybe the two bedrooms, you, you allow for one and a half. And then you offset that with four for the three or four bedrooms. Since you have a total number of parking spaces.
Yeah.
I mean, maybe I'm misunderstanding workforce versus family housing. Family housing, yeah, I, I can see two to three parking spaces. If I've got workforce housing, four bedrooms, I'm kind of thinking of the, the young people who might each have their own car.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's, so.
I agree with that.
I, I just, I'm not sure.
I do think by and large in all the apartment buildings, I think we have a max, there's been a max, I think, of three bedrooms, just because that's how it.
So again, even to that point, though, if you're three bedrooms, one and a half spaces isn't, isn't gonna be enough.
Yep. We're happy to.
Yeah.
I think we have to give ourselves some leeway here and not have it be the absolute max. Yeah, if, if, if it's a two-bedroom unit, I'm willing to withstand that being the max, but if I've put in workforce housing with many more bedrooms, I'm gonna have to do some finagling here with the.
Or take a look at bedrooms, right? So maybe we tie the parking to bedrooms. You know, not units, but bedrooms.
We're happy to take a look at that. We do need to start with some language. Um, so I don't know if you're willing to let that language stay for now.
Certainly.
But we understand the concern. We think it's a reasonable concern. We've got a couple of things. We've got a number of bedrooms. We also have for the smaller multifamily developments, there might be a need for a greater number per unit. Um, so we're happy to address that concern.
Great.
Do you have any answer?
Nope. Um, all right. Um, my questions have been answered. Anybody have anything else on this?
Just, well, one last thought on the parking. We limit the height and therefore the number of stories of the potential parking garages, right? I mean, is that another way to come at the same issue is to maybe allow for an additional layer of garaged parking?
So currently, Joe, correct me if I'm wrong, we allow for at least one level as of right.
Correct.
And then if you want more, that's fine, but they gotta ask you, and it's through a special permit.
Okay. But we don't, the dimensional height limits, does it cap the total height of the parking garage?
I think just as a structure in that.
Maybe within the MICMOD, yeah.
So that would effectively limit it to what? A two-story parking garage above ground? And in theory, they could go down one level, maybe?
Potentially three. I think. Depends on the underlying zoning district. So in the, I think through the special permit, they can authorize more. So I think you have that flexibility to go higher.
Okay. Sorry.
No, no, it's a good question.
To come at the parking challenge.
Yep.
Got it.
Thanks.
All right.
I have one more.
Sure.
Um, Jeff or Joe, can you guys just talk briefly about this floodplain overlay district? Was that a result of what?
Happy to. So, all right. So as you know, there can be no discretionary or special permit relief needed for the multifamily housing project. So currently in our zoning bylaw, it is possible that you might need a special permit for work within a floodplain. Okay? We can't allow that for the multifamily housing. So we did reach out to our, uh, floodplain coordinator, and apparently we were the first municipality to reach out to them. They were a little surprised, but there's a couple of ways to approach this. So one is we could have some language in the MICMOD, um, bylaw that says, look, you take the performance standards that currently exist in the floodplain overlay district. Okay? And rather than it being by special permit, it's just by a simple majority permit as part of the site plan review process with the planning board. So that could be one way to fix it. Uh, we were not able yet to get a clear, um, definitive answer. Um, it's not only from our floodplain coordinator, but, but higher-ups. So they would have to check and go through this language versus our, our current zoning language. But in reaching out to them, they did inform us that we are in fact already out of compliance with the current floodplain requirements. But they weren't gonna do anything about it because what they typically, they have new boilerplate language from the state. So what they typically do is when your maps get renewed, when a new map is published, they make you come into compliance at that time. All right? So the boilerplate language from the state, it doesn't require a special permit, it just requires a permit. So if we were to proactively before 2025, when our next flood maps get updated, if we were to adopt the new boilerplate language from the state, removing just coastal, um, references which do not apply to us, that would then eliminate this issue. We could eliminate this section from the MICMOD, and we would then be compliant. We, they'd still have the performance standards, even more performance standards, but it wouldn't be discretionary. And that would get us ready to going forward. The only thing we have to change is when a new map comes out, just update the map reference and publication date. So we could do that in the spring, and that would solve that problem. So that's one way. The other way is like we mentioned, we put in language like this, which when 2025 comes around, we may then have to amend this section of the bylaw if it's in conflict with the new floodplain. So part of me says if it's boilerplate language from the state, and we're already not in compliance, even though they're not gonna take any action, you know, why not just adopt it? It hopefully shouldn't be controversial. It's just the language from the state that we have to adopt to maintain our participation as a flood insurance community, right? If we don't do that, we have to do that. So, um, and that would solve that problem. And then what I would suggest, we would put that warrant article before the MICMOD article. If it.
Failed for.
Fails for some reason, then we have, you know, the, the fallback language put in. Does that make sense?
It does.
So the MICMA was okay with that approach? So we just, since you would arguably be the sponsors, we want to make sure you're okay with that approach?
Yeah. All right.
Okay, so that chips away at one of my other discussion points. The other one is parking, everyone's favorite topic tonight. So, um, our GIS department is going through, we're doing a little research and exercise. We are looking at some existing developments in town. We're using aerial imagery to go back in time, both pre-COVID and during COVID and where we are now, and to kind of show that some of our parking requirements may not really be matching what the demand has been even pre-COVID. And so what we'd like to do, even for some of the properties that are within the draft overlay district, if you go out there, you'll see that there have been vacant parking lots, like literally almost never used since some of those uses have been in existence. And it has nothing to do with COVID. In cases like that, we think it makes sense to take a look at revising the parking standards, look at what some of the actual uses has been over a long period of time, throw in a safety factor and just reduce that standard. Because what that could do is in the overlay district, you could literally take an existing parking lot, and it could literally be a potential sighting for a multifamily, uh, development without really creating any. So we think it makes sense, even if we weren't doing, you know, this multifamily, it just makes sense going forward, knowing what we know now, the issues with stormwater, how things are changing. It's, we want to be responsible about the requirement for parking, but we also want to acknowledge, uh, you know, we may need to tweak some of the requirements for some of the uses. And we may long-term need to define, further define some uses so we can better match parking requirements to it. And/or give the planning board a little more flexibility, you know, as you have for some of your projects, it may, it sometimes says as may be determined, you know, by planning board during site plan review. Because not every use is gonna exactly match, you know, a use in your table or the table of parking requirements. So we are also wondering if you would be willing to examine a parking amendment for even the annual town meeting. A fairly light lift, but we give you the information.
Yep. Yeah.
Okay. That's all I've got. And now we still have a couple of members, uh, from MICMA who are not planning board members, and we do have someone from Gutierrez Company if you'd like to hear their thoughts.
Yep. Anybody have any thoughts they want to share? Please feel free to come on up.
Yeah, I, I would just compliment, uh, Joe and Jeff on their fine job along with our consultant. Um, you know, we worked really hard, but it, it was through their guidance.
Just so it could be captured, could you just pop up?
Oh, yeah. Um, I just wanted to give credit, uh, to our consultant and Jeff and Joe on the fine job they did that, you know, um, we worked very hard, guided by our chairman, but, um, without staff and our consultant, it wouldn't have gone as smoothly. Um, we know we're not at the level of a finished product. You know, we look to you to, to fine-tune it as you see fit. Uh, but it's gonna, it's been a good process. We're proud with, uh, what we've come forward with, and, um, we hope you guys, uh, it's, it's nice to hear you input even this evening as to.
Guys have done amazing job.
How you guys look at things. It's, it's nice. So appreciate that. Appreciate Jeff and Joe and, and our consultant.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, I'm Israel Lopez with the.
I'm Israel Lopez with the Gutierrez company and.
Could you just do the microphone just so it's being recorded?
Sure. Israel Lopez with the Gutierrez company. Um, it's been a few years since I've been in this boardroom, but I've been here, uh, very often working with the town on West Tech Park East, Tech Park West, what we call Tech Park East and Tech Park West. Um, and have been working with Joe and Jeff, uh, and paying close attention to the conversations on the development of the MBTA communities and the overlay district that's being considered. Uh, and really I just wanted to come this evening. I've, I've shared some correspondence with Jeff that I know has been circulated, uh, to the board, but just wanted to reiterate sort of our view. We haven't made a formal presentation to the MCMAC committee, although we've been in, in close communication with Jeff and John, uh, Jeff and Joe. Um, we, you know, Tech Park East, the, the, uh, million or so square foot, uh, office park, uh, that's got 10 or so, uh, buildings there is, um, really an important asset, uh, to our company. We, we developed that park, you know, going back to the eighties and nineties and, um, it's really evolved over time. Um, it's, it's, um, been extremely well leased, uh, over the years. Uh, obviously the pandemic has impacted, uh, office leasing all around the Commonwealth, but we think the park is still very viable. Um, and, and having said that, you know, the addition and the inclusion of, um, multifamily housing, workforce housing into that mix, we think is a really good idea. Um, there are lots of examples of that, um, that I'm sure the board is familiar with. And we think there, you know, there's a good opportunity for us to incorporate, um, some units into the park. I've shared sort of some guidance in terms of our near-term thinking. Um, also, you know, we, we don't envision, uh, Tech Park East to turn into, you know, a mostly residential development by any stretch. And I think, you know, our sort of, um, thoughts in terms of the amount of density, uh, for that, uh, park would be somewhere in the neighborhood of 250 to 275 units, um, which we think would sort of fit nicely, uh, within the park. I think, you know, working with, uh, Jeff and Joe and the MCMAC committee to sort of fine tune the area, uh, to be included within that. Uh, one of the things as I've been, you know, hearing the conversation tonight, um, and all the things that are being considered with the overlay, with the different uses that are being considered in addition to, uh, multifamily housing, um, is, you know, restaurants, for example. And we have an opportunity along Littleton Road to convert, um, you know, incorporate a restaurant use along Littleton. If you're familiar with Tuscan Kitchen in Burlington or Strega along, you know, 128, you've seen the incorporation of restaurants into office buildings. We think there's a nice opportunity to do that, create some transitional open space that then opens up to residential sort of in the interior part of the campus. So, uh, we encourage, uh, the board to consider, um, those kinds of opportunities, um, uh, which we think could really make for a more successful, uh, park. And so, um, if you have any questions, uh, for me, I'm happy to answer them. But the point was just really to kind of express our desire to make sure that, uh, Tech Park East, um, gets included in, in that overlay.
Great. Thank you.
Jeff? What are your thoughts about parking requirements of 1.5 dwelling?
I think so. We've similarly, um, have done empirical, um, studies and we've permitted in addition to what's now called Bell, um, apartments, but we've permitted, you know, and, and, and developed 1,500 apartment units, um, suburban, uh, units. And that's really the range that we see, uh, usage for. It's, you know, so anywhere between 1.25 to, you know, 1.75, you know, just to provide a range. I think 1.5 is really where the market is. Um, and so we, we think that that number makes sense, especially within the context of a mixed use, um, uh, environment where you've got uses that, um, kind of alternate, you know, parking during, uh, daytime for office workers and, you know, uh, parking during the evenings for, uh, residents. Um, I know that most towns require, uh, much, you know, greater parking ratios than 1.5, but I will say that we've also seen towns taking a look at that because there are a lot of, with stormwater regulations becoming more stringent, um, there, there's a lot of focus on trying to reduce unnecessary pavement.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Johnny Cunningham, Ford Butternut Road. Uh, I'd just like to echo what Sam said about, uh, the help we got from, well, this, these guys that established this and, um, Jeff and Joe. Uh, one of the things I want to keep in mind, there's almost a policy issue here of, of questions going to be asked, why we didn't do the minimum. Or if you look at what we have here, it strikes a kind of a balance between, between what could be the maximum and what could be a minimum. I don't know what the number is, but we had NIMCOG take a look at it and it was a pretty high number. We're supposed to lay a, uh, put a in place, um, a zone that will allow up to 924 units or a minimum of 924.
Minimum potential, yep.
Potential. That doesn't mean we have to build them, but we had to set that stage. So what we have in place in front of you is something that would allow more than that. So that's going to be an explanation that we're going to have to give to the public. And the simpler we can make it, the better. Uh, the clearer we can make it, the better. And we're going to be, we have a lot ahead of us as far as explaining this to the public, getting it for annual town meeting where people really understand. I think this is one of the more complex zoning bylaws. I don't know what you've done in the past, the ones I've seen before annual town meeting, I've been able to follow pretty well. This one's more complex than some of those I've seen. So we're in it for the long haul. We're going to be, uh, I think Jeff's on schedule to present this or at least our, this version to the state and have them take a look at it. And before annual town meeting, we'll have a sense from them whether or not this is going to pass. And then we're going to be working on that. When you do the open town meet, or the, uh, public hearings on it, we'll be there to support you and, uh, really appreciate your support in this.
Thank you for your work.
Thanks, John. Just want to say we've had a lot of, it's not just Jeff and Joe. We have other staff. We have assistant planner, GIS department. They've, uh.
Don't be modest, Jeff. Don't be modest.
They've done a lot of, uh, they've done a lot of work.
Assessor's office.
Oh, assessor's office.
Schools.
Oh, yes.
Team left, though, down. You guys are really. All right. Is there anything else from the board?
Not at this time.
Okay.
Uh, all right. So I will make a motion to sponsor the proposed zoning bylaw amendment relative to the MBTA community's multifamily overlay district as amended this evening.
Second?
We got a motion to second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
I can second that, right?
What's that?
I can second that even though I'm on the MCMAC.
You can't be robbed of your planning board powers.
All right. Next we have revised of, uh, draft, review of draft minutes. I didn't think I saw minutes.
We didn't have a chance to get them in a timely fashion to, for us to be able to review and get your plan. So we'll have them for the next meeting.
All right. And I did see we have the meeting dates for next year.
We do. Yeah. We just wanted to run it by you. I know last time we were, uh, in flux a little bit on the January dates, uh, but we picked a couple, made sure the meeting room was available, fixed the Patriots day, uh, meeting date and the October town meeting. We had originally put, uh, the 21st, but that'll be special town meeting date. So we pushed that to the 28th. Um, I didn't know if you had any grief or questions, um, for us.
I don't.
Nope.
Okay. Anybody else?
No.
Nope. All right. Anything else? Members of the board?
Motion adjourned.
Second?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you very much.